Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock and we call this work session of the St. Lucie Public School Board Meeting to order. Happy New Year to everybody. Hope you had a great holiday. We are back and ready to finish up the second half of the school year. Mr. Jones, we'll turn it to you.
Thank you. Good morning to everyone and a Happy New Year as well. I hope everybody rested last night. I know we were just talking about the game was on. It was over early, so some of us that got an extra 30 minutes, I guess, to shut eye. So I think we have a very important workshop this morning and wanted to have some good discussion with the school board regarding us going to the voters for a referendum. But before I get into that, at the end of the school year, at the end of the, before the break, we received our graduation information from the state and I really haven't had a chance yet to publicly share that. When I leave here this afternoon, the EDC has a luncheon and then there's going to be like a state, different groups are going to be able to present. I'll have five minutes to talk about last year, so the main portion of that's going to be pretty much what you all see today and then we'll share it with our principals on Thursday. So I'll start there with an update. And the trend continues to go up and this is our four-year trend and you can see the increase of almost 16 points or percent since 1415. And we're right there at the 92% range. This one here is, shows how we compare with our surrounding counties and you can see the top five schools right there. Lake LPA, Treasure Coast, Centennial, PSL. And then Westwood, nothing to complain about, coming in at 92% as well. It's just not only good news for our county, but good news for our surrounding counties as well as the rate continues to increase. And then when we take just our comprehensive high schools, that's where we would take performance base out and Del Cassens and some of the other programs. When we just compare apples to apples, this is our rate with our six comprehensive high schools at 96 and a half percent. We really do a fantastic job and the kids that aren't in that are still in the cohort. You know, we have really less than 1% of students that don't graduate from school, which is a great number for the county. This right here is just a four-year trend by school and again, with the exception of Lincoln Park Academy, you can see everyone in double digits over the last four years. With Central at 15, Westwood a remarkable 28%. Port Tennessee High School, again at 26, Centennial at 15, Treasure Coast 15 and a half. And as a district, I mentioned it already, 16, over 60% increase compared to the state. So it's continuing a good story to tell for us. And then when we look at the large, very large and medium districts, those with over 1,700 graduates, we're third in the state. We're in the top 10 overall, but we're third with those that we compare ourselves to. And then this is the one that I really think is so important is this is when we break down the data by our different subgroups and our different populations and you can see that in every group, whether it's the economically disadvantaged Hispanics, English learners that were over the state average in every area and then the number in the front is where we rank in the state, fourth, fifth and sixth. When we look here at ESE, I think with, I know we're second, right Bill? With large, very large school district, we came in second there and again, 15% higher than the state. African-American students, 10th in the state and then with our white students. So again, a good story to tell with our different diverse groups of students that we have here. And so I just wanted to share that information with you briefly because that's excellent news that we have. And before I move on to the referendum, just wanted to know if there are any questions regarding that. We'll recognize the schools probably, we were going to maybe do it tonight, but we're going to do it in February, at the February Board meeting. We'll bring the schools in before, at the work, at the work, at the board meeting and give them their recognitions that we do every year, give them posters and things like that. And then this will be one of our talking points when we go out. So I'll move on now to the next topic and this really is where we're going to talk, get into the weeds a little bit regarding a referendum and a special election and I think you have notes and I sent some things to you last, I think yesterday Kerry sent that out to you. And so the bottom line really here is that the challenge is that the district is facing currently right now. It is no surprise and you all are aware of this, but at the state level, policy, funding determinations, you know, how our teachers are compensated, how we get money from the state has really been a challenge for us. This year, for the first time, we were not able to do reoccurring raises for any of our employees and for our teachers as well. We did the one-time bonuses and the inequity of the funding that comes down from Tallahassee really, really limits our ability in this area for teacher salaries. As the board may be aware, I think you know this as well, the state legislature sets the military rate for the school district. We can't increase that military rate. Local governments have the opportunity to do that. We can't do that without going to the voters. Just, this is just a review, this past year, 2018, 19, we had $5.7 million in new revenue that came in. And so people say, well, you got $5.7 dollars in new money, but as you'll see, that's already accounted for. FTE, that's 1.1 million and that's a reserve based upon the student enrollment. We should be getting our second calculation from October at any time and then that lets us know because if those dollars, if the students aren't there, those dollars go back to the state. That's not money that we would keep in our coffers. That's money that would go back. We would only keep the money based upon the number of new students that we would receive. Categorical increases again in the mental health area, almost a million dollars. That was categorized. We appreciate those dollars. Bill was able to hire social workers, we're trying to hire other counselors as well in that area, but those dollars were designated. So there's no flexibility on how they're spent in safe schools. 1.7 million, that all went to the sheriff's department for officers in our school centers as well as the school district pumps in another million dollars for our own security force that comes out of our operational dollars. Teacher lead money is there that we can't touch. The next one is the FRS, the retirement system, almost a million dollars. 800,000 there went to, dedicated to that. That's set by the state as well. And then our property casualty work insurance is 800. So when all is said and done, out of the 5.7 million, we have less than $100,000 of new money. So when you look at trying to pay teachers or pay employees or look at reoccurring cost of, through inflation of fuel or electricity and those kinds of things, you can see that we really didn't receive any new monies from the state this year. The biggest challenge that I think that we're going to be facing, and there was an article today that I was reading from Lake County, is where we've got to be able to continue to recruit and retain the best teachers. The graduation rate, the being ranked 22nd in the state in academic performance, all of that is based upon our quality instruction from our teachers. Teachers that have, districts that have higher salaries have higher retention rates and the total per pupil funding really is the same as it's been for 10 years. We really haven't received any new dollars for that. Education Week, the magazine that comes out that really talks about education nationally, has given Florida an F in school spending. They've rated Florida last in per pupil spending and they have identified that in our state, less than 1/10 of 1% of students live in districts where the, where the spending would exceed or reach the, whatever, what the national benchmark is. So it's really not a great commentary on where we are in the state as far as funding goes compared to the nation. Some other research, and I was reluctant whether to put this up here or not, but I think it's going to be important that when we're out, we talk about the brutal facts. Some other research rates Florida as the worst state to be a teacher. The main reason would be teacher pay and they listed the four, the four counties, not counties, I'm sorry, states that Florida outperforms, Arizona, Hawaii, Louisiana and North Carolina. Those are the only states in the country that have lower salaries than the state of Florida. One of the things that's real important and we don't talk a lot about this, is the cost of replacing good teachers, high-quality teachers. And that could, you know, this is an estimate and this is probably on the low end of that estimate, these figures can be anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 per teacher. When you look at how much, how well we train our teachers, when we look at what's entailed in going out and recruiting and recruiting teachers, professional development that goes on, the student performance impact, the reason that our district is performing at the levels that we're doing and the reason that we have been making the successes that we've had is directly related to our classroom instruction. And so when you lose a good teacher, a high-quality teacher, how do you measure that impact on student performance? Well, there'll be a decline in that performance. It's just hard to articulate what that would be besides lower scores, but the effect that that would have on that individual child is probably priceless. So in a nutshell, we're going to need significant revenues to improve not only our teacher salaries and compensation to recruit and retain our teachers, but also to improve our school security. As you're aware, the county stepped in this year even though with the 1.7 million and we put in another, it's probably about, it's probably about $2.2 million that we've, 1.7 from the, from the state and then another almost $1 million from the, from our general fund to help fund our officers in our schools. The county commission stepped up and right after Parkland happened last year, the sheriff put in officers in every school or elementary schools that not have the officers at that time. And so they stepped up and felt that need at a sacrifice to them on other, on other things that the sheriff's office does. And so then this year, the county commission as well continued that funding. Again, some sacrifices that they would have to make in that area. And so we're going to need revenues to improve school security, continue in the mental health services and to make sure that we can fund other operations that are there, other operations. This is where another part of our challenge comes in and I've shared this with the board as well in the past, but that 20 districts went and had local taxes, village referendums. So this creates competition to not only recruit teachers, but it creates the competition to retain them. And when you look at this and we look just at our neighbors to the south from Miami Dade to Broward County to Palm Beach County to Martin County, we've got Orange County. You can see that, I'll just share, in the next slide I have some numbers, but these are our neighbors that will be, will all be going up to the same pool of teachers or trying to retain our teachers. When we look at the beginning salaries, just around here, you can see where Palm Beach is currently. Now that's not, that's based upon this year, that's not based upon next year, any negotiations. Where Indian River County is right now and they're in the process of negotiations, I think they went to MPAS based upon what I read this morning, Okeechobee at 39. And where Martin is, Martin will be at 39.8 next year based upon the referendum that they just passed there. Just to give you some other ones, Miami Dade at 41,000, Browards at 40,700, Brevard 39,200, Orange is at 40,000, Seminoles at 40,000, Volusia 39.1, Polk County in the interior part, over 41,000. So you can see in beginning salaries alone, we're lagging behind in that area. When we look at the, just the two counties to the south of us and we look at the salary increases that they're going to receive, you'll see in Martin County, it's going to range from anywhere from 18 to 7,800 and from Palm Beach to 1,000 to 10,000 based upon years of experience. This would be the ballpark of where we would need to be as a district. If we were successful in the referendum and if the board decides to go in that direction, then this is something that would have to be negotiated with our union partners and, but this would be the ballpark area for us to remain competitive with our surrounding counties. I think right now we have over 245 or 15 teachers that leave right now just to go to Martin County alone. It might be a little bit higher than that. And then teachers that go to Palm Beach County as well. When I was in Palm Beach County, I was very surprised at the number of teachers that were, because I'd run into them all the time from St. Lucie County. So this represents one of our major, major challenges, not only in the recruitment area, but in the retaining in the area. Because if I have 10 years' experience and I can make anywhere from, you know, $8,000 to $10,000 more, teachers have already been talking to us about this and I know they've been talking to David and the, and our union partners as well. The board, based upon state statute, has the right to pursue a resolution and direct the county commission to call an election to approve an ad valorem tax mileage authorized in state statute. It would be for four years. It can't exceed four years. So if the board were choosing to go in that direction, it would be a four-year mileage election. What I would be recommending at the end of this presentation is 1 mil. The average assessed value in St. Lucie County is around 202,000 when you take out the homestead exemption. It's, the assessed value itself is that the average citizen is $175,000. That would generate over $22 million yearly for us and that the approximate cost would be around $14 a month for a large two-topping pizza for folks. And I think it's something certainly affordable for our community. What we've done to gauge public support is we hired a reputable polling firm, Clearview Research, Steve Bancor, who also did the, led the Children's Services Council referendum two years ago and led the half-cent sales tax, the successful half-cent sales tax for the county government and for the county just a couple of months ago. So what was done, they conducted a random sample of registered voters. This was balanced based upon different variables to ensure that it represented the electorate. The margin of error was plus or minus 5%. Some of our staff were polled on this. One of them was Ava. Ava's, so if you want to, I don't know if Ava's in here this morning, but Ava can give you the questions that came up. And Ava was a great supporter of the school district, having worked for us for many, many years. But it was interesting to talk to her directly and see this. So if we were to move forward, this would be the specific ballot language. This was the ballot language that was taken based upon the polling itself. This was the ballot language and I am going to read it out loud. In order to raise the salaries of teachers and educational support staff, recruit and retain highly qualified teachers, improve mental health services and to fund other essential operations that preserve important school programs, shall the St. Lucie County School District levy an ad valorem annual operating mileage of 1 mil for four years with all funds reviewed by a citizens advisory committee. And I think what's important there is, and we haven't talked much about this and we will be, and this will be something I know that when we're out communicating with our community, that these funds are overseen by a citizens advisory committee so that there can be no, a school board member can't come in and say, you know, I've, I've got a special project here or there. What we would do is based upon what's here, however these dollars would spend, we'd have an independent citizens advisory committee to look at that. That's, that's really been ballot language that's on, I haven't seen any of that, that's not the ballot language on there. I know back in '04 when I led a referendum in Palm Beach County, we had that, that language was there that was very, that the community was very involved in and you never heard one peep in the Palm Beach Post or anywhere of any kind of controversy because the dollars went exactly to where they said they would go and every penny was spent where it said, where we said it would be spent and we showed that we were great stewards of our public's dollars and their taxpayer, their tax dollars. Within this polling itself, you would see that 69% would vote yes, 22% would vote no. The strong support was in these particular areas of recruiting, retaining high-quality teachers at 85%, raging teachers compensation at 82, mental health services at 80, school security at 75, preserving important school programs at 70. These are all very strong numbers that we had strong support for in our, in our polling. Also that every dollar remains right here in our county. None of these dollars go to any other counties in the state, the independent oversight committee which I just mentioned, and then the dollars used to implement the Stoneman Douglas Security One of the things that I wanted to discuss with the board is a mail-only election. And this is kind of a different concept for a lot of folks, but in the last two elections, 70% of the voters voted by means other than on election day. That means they either went to early voting or they voted by mail. If we went to a mail-only, every registered voter receives a ballot and they can either mail that back or they can return it to the elections office. And there are three right now in the counties. There's the main office, Ms. Walker's main office on Okeechobee Road. There's an office on Walton Road. There's one in St. Lucie West at the county government building there. And then when tradition, the asterisk there is at the tax collector's building, which is due to be completed any time, there'll be a fourth office there. So if we went this direction, if folks, if anybody was nervous about mailing something in, they could, you could hand-deliver that to the elections office before the election or on the election day itself. One of the benefits of this is that this would ensure that we have the widest, really the broadest outreach for the public to have a voice in funding our public schools. And it also saves dollars because this special election will be funded by the school district and we have, we have dollars to be able to do that. These are one-time, non-reoccurring dollars that we receive each year from different projects that are out there. One of these, the main way would be right now is where we are selling two of our TV stations and we're going to be generating revenue in from the sale of that as well as monthly money that comes in as well from the past in the area of communications that we could fund this, we could fund this. I think that the ROI, the return on investment is that we can fund approximately 250 to 300,000 or maybe a few dollars more, but the return on investment would be $22 million over four years, which would put us over around $90 million for the needs that we've talked about just a few moments ago. My recommendation to the board would be to pursue the ad valorem tax referendum to establish April 23rd, which would be about three and a half months from now is the voting date, to conduct an all-mail election campaign and to invest in a marketing campaign here at the district as well. We have our own expectations department. The board members themselves, and we'll talk more about this in a couple of weeks, the board members as individual board members and around the groups can advocate. You can say, vote for this. The school district itself can educate. So we can, we can do education and we can do information like we have on the walls here and mailings and those kinds of things to voters that would educate them on pretty much what I presented to you today. We'd get into a little more detail in a couple of weeks when we do some professional development on the actual talking points, the four of which I had mentioned to you right now. I think that we're at a critical juncture in Florida, particularly right here in St. Lucie County. We have, we are turning around. Our academic performance is going up, our graduation rates are going up. Everything is moving in the right direction and that could fall apart very, very quickly if we don't have the high-quality instructors that we need in our classrooms and high-quality teachers. Somebody, I taught this, I used to teach civics way back in the day and so competition is the lifeblood of capitalism. All right?
Until you buy each other out.
What's that?
Until they buy each other out.
So we are, we're in competition. We're in competition. We're in competition with neighboring counties. We're in competition with the state. We're in competition nationally. We go out and do recruitments and our HR department does an excellent job of this and we've been doing a nice job of getting folks in, but the national trend, it's getting harder and harder to find quality educators and it's getting harder and harder and we're difficult and challenging to maintain that, to maintain that. I've got a letter that I was going to bring, but I didn't bring from a teacher who's been working for so many years and making, you know, $3,000 or $4,000 more after 16 years and how does she, how does she support her family? How does she, you're all over aware of it better than anyone else. So I think the time is right that we would go out there. I don't think that kids' education is too important to us day-to-day. There has to be a sense of urgency that we have in our schools, which we have in our schools. Someone may say, well, why would you not wait until 2020? We can't afford to wait until 2020 because we'll lose. All the gains that we've made, that strong foundation that this district has been built on could crumble very, very quickly. I think it's important that we would focus on what we would get out of this and the successes that we would see and that we have been good stewards of taxpayer dollars, that we are seeing the return on investment in student performance and that this will be crucial for the future of our school district. So that completes my portion of the presentation. I really wanted to open it up to any questions that the board members would have. Tonight as well, we'll be, depending upon how this goes, you know, then we would be voting officially at tonight's meeting on agenda items that are there.
Mr. Assistant Attorney General, what type, what percentage are we roughly looking at for return on voters' percentage? Have you talked with Gertrude at all to see if we do a mail-only type of?
We would have a much greater turnout with mail-only research.
What are we looking at? Could she quote?
We have, we have numbers of the last two elections, of early elections, of 70%, of which there's a percentage of that is mailing. Well, we look nationally and it's a new concept, but it's a different day. It's a different, it's a different, it's a different day and age. What we need to do is get the most, the broadest voter turnout we can. That will help us to be successful. And we feel that by doing this, we're being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars because we're paying for this, but that we can have the broadest appeal. And that'll be contingent upon us and the folks that are in the room right now and as well as our school centers to educate the public on this and then to educate about the mail-in as well.
And for this, we need 50%?
50%.
Well, you only need, Madam Chair, we only need 50%, but we haven't had a special election in this county for, I don't know when we've had a special election, a very, very long time. And the law says that you can do 100% mail-in if there's no candidate on it. And so that was one thing that, so it'd be a whole due date. Supervisors of Elections Associations several years ago went to the state and suggested that we need to consider going statewide. And they, they didn't go statewide, but as you know, they broadened the ability for people to do absentee balloting and so the vote by mail thing and the special election is really untested territory. But because we only need 50% plus one vote instead of the 60% and the proposal from the state now would be to change that to 67% in the future, but we'll see how that goes.
Yeah, and that's a good point because there is, you know, unlike federal, our state constitution items that had to have 60% of the vote, this would require 50. But there is, you do hear, you do hear rumblings and you do hear rumors and you do hear where there's a push in the legislature to make any kind of a special election to 60%, just like you do on constitution. And that's another reason why you can't afford to wait because that could happen in this legislative session. We have heard that. Whether it goes through or not, you don't really know until the end, but that's, that's been a drum roll that's been out there for the last few years.
And Madam Chair, as you know, we're Tampa and part of the discussion about all the elections, the referendum, is that it takes the legislature off the hot seat to actually fund education appropriately until the FFP. However, there is really no other alternative at this time.
Madam Chair, two things that I think about, having worked with educators and staffing, every time I lose a staff member, it's true that it costs us thousands of dollars. So as a businessperson, from a practical viewpoint, we want to encourage and keep the staff that are already highly trained and continue to train the ones that maybe need encouragement and help. And the second thing, the most important piece of any classroom, of any child that we teach is the personal relationship between that child and that staff. And we as board members and all supportive staff, we can support and do many, many things, but that personal relationship with the child in the classroom is where the growth happens. And so I feel very strongly that absolutely we have to support our teachers. We want to have livable wages. I think it's tough to say right now with the insurance and all the other pieces. We're not the only county that has this problem, but we are in a place where teachers can drive an extra 30 minutes or an hour to make $5,000 more, $8,000 more. So it is, it is about competition. So even, even if we just looked at it not from the social piece of what's important for children, if we just looked at it from the business model, then this is the correct thing to do as, as a good business.
Madam Chairman, I think it's also a correct thing to do just for the safety and security of our children. You know, supporting law enforcement in a way that has never been supported in this county. You know, the county commissioners have done a good job, but you know, trying to work issues out, it's a whole lot easier if we could put more into the funding stream for the sheriff and work that out with other municipalities. The second thing is I just want to make sure on record, this is going out to all voters?
Yes.
Yes, yes, all voters, okay. And then, and then my other, my real concern is, is four years is rather short. What was the rationale for just picking four years rather than eight years?
Because state law.
State law.
And Madam Chair, Mr. Anderson, we have requested, actually Ms. Holly through her being president of the consortium has requested that that law be changed to 10 years. And it probably won't get any traction, but we have requested in this legislative session that it become a priority of different organizations to change that to 10 years. And because of the timing, if it passes a law for 10 years before we go on to the actual ballot, we'll see that the timing is interesting, but we don't know if it's going to go anywhere. No one's picked it up as a champion yet, but that is a push.
Creates conversation anyway amongst people that didn't have the awareness of the four years.
Yeah.
Obviously, I didn't either.
But at the four years, with the four years itself, your public, your teachers and the community will know that we're doing what we say we're going to be doing and we continue the growth that we've had so that when you, if you come back in four years to go back to them, you know, you will have a story to tell, just like we have a story to tell right now. You would continue to have that story to tell that we have been done well. to them, you know, you will have a story to tell, just like we have a story to tell right now. You would continue to have that story to tell, that we have been done well by the, by the taxpayers themselves, and really looked at the dollars to spend and where they were needed. And again, it's the compensation for teachers, it's the recruitment and retention, as Troy mentioned, security, security itself with officers, the mental health needs, of which the state gave us dollars, and we're grateful for that, but it's a drop in the bucket plus the competition. Not only do we face competition for instructors, we face competition for mental health professionals in the school areas as well, and then to really maintain existing programs that we have. We have our career technical education programs, we're increasing our industry certification, we're doing a better job of preparing kids for college and/or work if they choose to work, stay home here. You know, working closely with the Economic Development Council, builders association, manufacturers association, all of those groups all have a stake in this, and they watch us very closely, you know, to make sure, and like I said, we have been good stewards with this. So, I think you would have a good story to tell. But the main thing right now would be to educate the public, and to advocate, you all can advocate to the public as well, and to have a really strong campaign to get out, get the word to as many voters as we can, to get as many folks as we can to weigh in on this, to help support our school centers.
Any questions or comments?
So, I'm good to go, we're good to go for this evening. Very good. See what else I can ask for. As we, as we close out, we will have a, we'll have another board work session in two weeks, and at the, at the end of that regular board work session workshop, we'll, we'll do a, some professional development with the board on messaging and those kinds of things. I want to shift here real, real quick. There's been some questions that you've received over a potential charter that's come up, and I didn't know, I have Jonathan on standby if there were any specific questions, or if Jonathan can come up and just briefly, you have it in front of you, the timeline of where we are, and I just wanted to make sure that the board was, had accurate information, and up-to-date information regarding timelines and where we are, so that if you're asked questions from anyone, that we're prepared to answer. Jonathan? I guess, well, it's right in front of the board, so let's do this. If you guys want to take a quick look at that, you can see the timeline itself and where we are, and I think what I'll do is just, if there's specific questions, you can ask them, if there aren't any, and the board's okay, then.
I think we got it in an email.
You got it in an email, we got it in hard copy, and just wanted to see if the board had any specific questions at all.
Has there been any communication since the first with them? Have they responded at all?
We have not received a response yet.
Okay, so nothing passed at all. Simply, to me, simplistically, it appears that we really aren't even in the conversation mix at this point, because the main issue has to do with the urban service boundary, and we're not, you know, that's not a school district decision, that's a county commission decision.
Correct, that's up in the county, so we're, all we're doing is, we make sure that, you know, the applications that come in, as we would do for any charter, meet statute, meet policies, and work with that, work with that agency to make sure that if they don't, that this is what is needed, and we have been very, we've been very good with this particular group, and get an extension at the very beginning to allow them a couple more weeks to get their project in. So, that's, that's our role, that's the school district and the school board's role in that area. The other part is, is really not in our purview.
Yeah, I was sort of wondering how this came up. Did it come up just because it went through the urban service planning, and we had a representative there? Because I was just like, huh, why is this? Because I'm not getting questions.
I mean, Marty can address it in more detail if you want, but.
No, I read it, and that's why I was wondering.
The school district always provides comments to the county on any project that may have an impact on the school district.
Okay.
Whether it's residential, commercial, and in this case, because it's a charter school, we look at their applications and provide a comment. So, it was the normal course of what we do for the development review process at the county.
So, if they had Ag curriculum, it would be a little bit more beneficial for them? I don't know, I was just, was like, so I'm trying to read between the lines of what's going on with this document.
If we may, the school district, through Marty, we had a significant role in years ago, when they were doing the comprehensive plan and the, you know, LDRs and all those acronyms. And the discussion at that time was that the siding of schools, public schools, need to be within the urban service boundaries. As the urban service boundaries changed, that would be up to the county commission to change the urban service boundaries, but then we would make a commitment to put all public schools within the urban service boundaries for a variety of reasons, unless it was an Ag-based school. If it's an Ag-based school.
Totally Ag-based, and just not Ag-based curriculum.
If it was an Ag-based curriculum, then it would be, would be allowed out, but there would be an agreement, and Mr. Sanders said so on planning and zoning and all that kind of stuff. So, the, the comp plan indicates that. There was some misunderstanding with a couple of people that charter schools were indeed public schools. That caused some confusion. And then there was some confusion about the curriculum that had been presented to the, to us, to the school district that we approved 5.0 in September.
Ah, yeah.
So, there was some confusion. So, the basic rule that we've gotten into recently is just to clarify our role more than anything. And Mr. Sanders went to present to the regional planning council to clarify, once again, to clarify what, what our role is in this whole thing.
Well, I mean, it's really a basic engineering thing, because how are they going to get water and everything else down there for a school that's supposed to be 300 or 400? I mean, that's the reason why you stay inside the urban service boundary. I mean, that is like 99% of the reason.
There, there is central water to the development next door, the Seminoles.
Okay.
Resurrection project. So, they, they can satisfy some of the, they had a neighborhood meeting that's required, they send out notice to property owners next to the project, and they hold a neighborhood meeting. The primary concern from what we've heard was traffic. The residents on 11 Mile Road aren't real thrilled with the potential traffic impacts of having a school where they're, so.
That's why you build out there, so you don't have traffic. So, I mean, I understand that.
So, they have a series of hurdles to overcome from a development standpoint, but again, that's totally.
Now, are they using a existing piece of, this is the funny thing, are they using a building out there from an organization, or are they using a piece of property?
It's a vacant piece of property that they would develop.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I ask, was transportation a piece of that, do you know? Do they have transportation in their school?
Agreement?
Yes.
That they would have to provide busing for their students?
Yes.
No, based on the current state of the law, and that, that's not required of charter schools, we did not require that as part of their charter.
I thought that we now require that in our charters.
Based on the court case that we lost with Renaissance, we can't force that issue out.
We can't put that in our particular charter for our wish for our system?
We did that, and we, we.
We lost.
Right, but I thought going forward.
We could say it's in our favorable outcome.
But going forward, there's no structure to do that, so the expectation is parents would provide transportation to 11 Mile Road.
A little bit further, but yeah.
Yeah, wow, okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Jonathan.
Mr. Superintendent Dinnett, you have anything else to bring before us then?
No, I just want to say, I think that the next, we'll do some training for everyone. I think the next three or four months are going to be very, very exciting. We have a great story to tell, we want to continue that. I think we need to view that in a positive light, we have favorable perceptions out there, and so it's, I think this can, you know, it can really be a major marker in the history of our school district, and we're looking forward to this process.
It's going to be a very short process, too. April is quickly coming upon us, so we look forward to hitting all the wording we need to move forward. Any other concerns, comments? If not, we are adjourned.